Good evening, welcome to the ZBA meeting. It's Thursday, April 11th. The four of us present today will be voting if it comes to a vote. We have no minutes to review from the last meeting. So, the only thing on the agenda today is a continuance of the Deerfield Industrial LLC, Five Industrial Drive West, South Deerfield, Mass. Applicant requests the driveway approach from site of Atlantic Furniture Incorporated, located Five Industrial Drive West to Route 116. Driveway to be used to alleviate truck and vehicular traffic at Industrial Drive West and provide second means of ingress or egress for emergency vehicles. So, at this time, anything you'd like to add? We all receive by email and hard copies from Heritage surveys.
Right, well, we reported the board before and the board asked us to do two things. There was a concern about the wires with regard to this new curb cut entrance. And Heritage says the wires are seventeen and a half feet. And we compared that to the wires at Industrial Drive West. And there's an island at Industrial Drive West, but some of the wires are eighteen feet high. And on the easterly side of that entrance, the wires are sixteen feet high. So, we're basically in conformance with the wires at Industrial Drive West. As we indicated before, after this incident happened the first time, they did come and they did raise the wires. This is the confirmation and proof of that. The other issue was safely entering and exiting. And Heritage went back to DOT and the standard is five hundred and ninety feet when it's fifty miles an hour. And this is more than five hundred and ninety feet. And there's photographs of that. And indeed, it's actually more visibility in this area than it is at Industrial Drive West, which is closer to a rise in the road. So, I think we fulfilled both of the requests that you made the last time we were here.
So, what you're saying is this satisfies the Mass DOT, this information you gave us about?
Yes, it does. They reviewed the DOT accounts. We're not adding any counts, just a question of where the traffic is exiting. And it's more than in conformance with the DOT site regulations.
And what happens, I see here, it says in your letter, additional traffic volumes onto Sundaland Road, Route 116 would only be generated by a facility expansion or change in operation either which is taking place.
Correct.
And if there was to be an expansion or something to...
We have no plans to expand at all. There's absolutely no plans to expand. The traffic counts indicate that there's somewhere in the neighborhood, I think, of thirteen thousand cars going past that facility. So, there wasn't a small expansion. But it's basically filling the site. There is no plans to expand there.
So, we would have to revisit this if there was an expansion?
We'd be happy to have a contingent upon revisiting it if there is an expansion.
Frank, in your documentation over there, is there any official letter from Mass DOT that they approved?
No, no, I don't have any. I don't think any of us received anything directly from Mass DOT, just from Heritage surveys.
They approved the curb cut.
Well, have you provided that in writing?
Yes, of course.
Can I have a copy of that? And I guess the question would be why it has not been provided to the board already?
It was provided to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to find it because we provided that. That was with our initial...
Sorry, I had to catch up and watch it, listen to it, watch it on the YouTube channel. So, I didn't have that.
Do you have that in front of you?
No, no, I don't.
I think I might.
I do.
Okay, as long as the board's seen something on Mass DOT letterhead, they're good with it. That's my question.
Yep, let me show you a copy of it, okay?
Okay, thanks. If this has already been in the record, we'll keep this copy in the record that they have.
And then here's another. There are a couple of different things.
January 4th. You may have received what there were. January 4th, 2018.
And here's this one, too.
Yeah, he should see. If he really wants to see.
Okay, thank you.
And you weren't here the first time, but we did provide that letter and the board was concerned about two things. In addition to that letter, they were concerned about the wires and they were concerned with the sight lines.
I did hear that in the meeting, yes, when I reviewed it.
And so, that's what we've done is through Heritage, we had them go out and measure the wires and we had them go out and do the sight lines. No, we wouldn't be able to be here without DOT approval, for sure.
I understand. I just want to see what they had to say, that's all.
Absolutely.
You get your name again, sir? Could I get your name again, please?
Tom, maybe your name?
I believe it's Tom Lesser.
Tom Lesser.
For the record, yeah.
Yeah. Would a card be helpful?
No, usually we just have people introduce themselves so the folks viewing at home know who you are, you know.
Anything to add?
No, nothing to add.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, did anybody else have any questions?
Say your name again, please.
Matthew Plotkin.
Okay. Got it.
Any questions, Rich?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
For the record, my name is Felicity Hardy. I'm the attorney for the Deerfield Economic Development Industrial Corporation. And with me is Paul Olszewski. We have not been provided whatever the materials were that were submitted electronically from Heritage surveys. So, I'm going to, my remarks are just gonna be based on my knowledge of Heritage surveys. I'm a real estate lawyer, so I know their work. They're very fine civil engineers, but they're not traffic engineers. And my understanding of where this was left with the board originally and then with the continued hearing was that the board was looking for a traffic study. And Heritage surveys, as I say, fine civil engineering firm, but they do not have the capacity to do a traffic study. And while I don't have whatever it is that they provided to the board, I don't think it could be a traffic study. We are delighted to hear that the height of the wires, that that problem has been fixed. That's great news. But in the absence of a traffic study, it is our view that the applicant cannot demonstrate that the new curb cut is safe. I think it's interesting also that whatever the materials were that the applicant has referred to, they observed that, or it seems like they were observing, that there's gonna be no additional volume that's gonna be generated by this, by Atlantic Furniture's use of the premises. So, once again, I question the need for a second means of egress. It doesn't seem as if there's any problem with the existing means of egress. So, I don't know why we need a second means of egress. And then finally, I think it's just common sense, and I think the board is certainly capable of exercising common sense, that a second entrance on 116, which is a busy road and has a high volume of traffic going at a high rate of speed, it's just not a safe thing to do unless the applicant can demonstrate it's safe. So, for all those reasons, we think that the application for the special permit should be denied.
Questions?
No, I mean, I think that, you know, years ago, when there was, you know, three, four hundred people, multiple shifts, Mr. Olszewski's testimony. In the last hearing, when I reviewed it, it showed, you know, there was a substantial amount of additional traffic there when those factories were full. So, you know, compared to the current use. But I don't think, you know, that's kind of a moot point to me. I mean, I did review the law and talk to Mr. Kalashewski. I feel as though that this is, you know, the basic, you know, the driveway was put in and there was a complaint and now it's before us because, you know, DEDIC and the tenant or the owner aren't on the same page, you know? And now here we are, you know, trying to determine, you know, no, it wasn't a traffic study what they submitted. This is a traffic study. There's two different things. But do we need a traffic study? I don't know. I mean, I don't think so. Mass DOT approved the curb cut. I mean, I talked to several people in town that said that that was the original curb cut. When my father told me that, when they worked for Consolidated Tobacco, when they put 116 in there, that was the original curb cut for that property before it was the industrial park. So, you know, is there, did Mass DOT approve it on existing? None of their paperwork says that. And then what Heritage surveys did was basically measure the distance in the sight line there and said it's conforming to the Mass DOT standard. So, there was no official traffic study done that I can see, similar to what Cumberland Farms had to do with traffic count, time of day, all that different things. But that's usually a planning board issue. And I believe they declined jurisdiction, right?
Yep. The only thing I'd have to say is on the original application, Dick said that based on the zoning laws or whatever, it would require a traffic study.
For a new development?
Didn't say anything about new development. He just said required based on the zoning. If you look at the second or whatever, the second or third page of the application would require a traffic study. I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I might say two things. Number one, Dick also told me that the fire department thought the curb cut was a good idea in terms of safety, in terms of fire engines getting to the back of the building.
I remember that from when I watched the meeting before.
And it's not adding any count to this road.
And can I...
I think it's another, it's more dangerous when you have cars piled...
I'm not gonna sit here and debate with you folks.
I'm just, I'm gonna tell you something right now. That property has been serviced by the two drive, the access roads on the south side and the north side. It worked fine for all these years. Trucks got in and out. You know, fire, whatever.
I mean, it comes down to, you could quantify it this way.
Yeah.
If someone wants two sidewalks to their one front door, is that their prerogative or not? You know what I mean?
But we're talking, then we're talking a third here.
Well, whatever. I mean, do I think, you know, do I know why they put the driveway in? I don't know. I mean, the question before me is, is it a safe or unsafe driveway? And do we have grounds to deny the driveway permit based on safety? And when the road is straight and Mass DOT says that it's in conformance with them, how do I say no? Just because I don't think you're gonna use it? I just have to say no?
And I say because a traffic study that was required by your building commissioner, building inspector, whoever title you want to put on...
So, that's the question for the chairman of the board. Are we, do we require, does the town of Deerfield require a true traffic study? Not, does it meet Mass DOT standards?
I don't know exactly what you were referring to, but maybe you were referring to when we were looking at the bylaws?
It states right in Dick's, in the application, it's...
I don't honestly know. Let's look at it and see if it said a traffic study or if safety is under consideration.
Because Mass DOT issued curb cuts in places, you know, where people buy and sell property and there's a lot of different reasons. And I don't believe that they come to us to ask for curb cuts.
Okay, here. We're looking at bylaw 5320, actually. Fifty-three twenty-two. It lists things that you need to consider when granting a special permit.
Right.
And the one that we're discussing right now is the traffic flow and safety, comma, including parking and loading.
Right.
So, we do have to take into consideration traffic flow and safety. I don't see where it says we have to have a formal traffic study.
I didn't see that either when I looked it over.
Are you looking at the application that was provided, that they submitted? No, I'm not addressing that. I'm talking the actual application that was presented to Dick Kalashewski. That's what I'd like you to reference. I don't have it in front of me. It's on the second page.
I've got it, okay. I've got it. I'm just gonna look through it.
Oh, we can, and the other thing we can do is close the hearing, it's talking amongst ourselves if you want to.
We get to that point?
Yeah.
No, I'm gonna grab it. Tell you what, I'm gonna go run and get my copy. It's the application itself.
I think this is the letter you're referring to in the application. You want to check it out?
Hmm, I'm looking.
Okay. In the meantime, I'm just gonna...
Give me a second.
I think this is what he's referring to, but I've got it.
So, sit here. Right here, this is what I'm looking at.
Oh, you're not referring to a letter, it's the application.
Okay, so bylaw 5322, which was the one we were just referring to. Apply traffic, apply traffic safety.
Right, which we're doing.
Right.
But does it say that we're required to require the applicant to do a formal traffic study? There's a difference between taking traffic safety into consideration and requiring an applicant to do a traffic study.
No, it doesn't say that.
Right.
It doesn't say that.
Because it would be unreasonable for us to require someone on Cap'n Lee to drive to put it to do a traffic study.
Right.
You know, so...
Do we need to close this? Are we still gathering information?
Do you have anything else to add?
No, the genesis, my recollection of the genesis of the traffic study was that at the first hearing, you asked for one. So, that's why I thought the applicant was gonna produce...
Yeah, and they did. They just didn't give you a copy of it.
No, we didn't.
Well, I don't believe that that's a full traffic study. That's just documenting that they're in, what they built is in compliance.
These are just sight triangles, is all they are, and speeds and sight triangles.
Well, it is what it is.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And I would just add that the chief chimed in. He added to his public comment. He mentioned something about a traffic study in his comment. I don't know if you saw that in the file.
An update from...
That was received in the last week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, from the chief. He called me and told me he had supplied that after I spoke with him because I had found that...
We should probably just read his comment into the record. Is that it right on top there?
Yes. Okay, so this is from Chief John Pachurk.
Yep.
Comments on the proposal. Longer line of sight compared to current driveway, farther away from intersection points, rendering safer. All other concerns should be addressed in a required traffic safety engineering review. Three twenty-one nineteen, Chief John Pachurk.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering whether or not when the chief and the DOT were looking at the longer sight lines, whether or not they were assuming that this was a substitute for industrial drive. I would be a little bit concerned if we were sort of talking at cross purposes and that what they were approving was something to replace industrial drive as opposed to supplement industrial drive. So, I don't know if the materials that you have in front of you speak to that or not, but I just raise it as a point. From my, I mean, I'm just a layperson, you know? But from my point of view, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense that adding a second entrance on 116 would be safer. I mean, maybe it's safer because if you discontinued industrial drive west, there are longer sight lines from the new curb cut. I mean, that raises just a whole nother basket of laundry, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not, because I don't have these materials, I really don't know. Maybe they are longer, but are we saying then that the longer sight lines from the second entrance and having a second entrance altogether makes that a safer way to enter and exit Atlantic Furniture's property? That just seems really counterintuitive to me.
Well, it says that they want to provide a second means of ingress.
Okay.
So, that to me means they're not gonna eliminate industrial drive.
Well, that's owned, but industrial drive west is controlled by the town, down to the cul-de-sac, which DEDIC owns and controls.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, you. Okay. Okay, so before I close the meeting, I just wanted to offer the opportunity, if you wanted to withdraw without prejudice, the application. It has to be unanimous. There's only four of us. Before we close the meeting and go into discussion.
No, we don't want to withdraw the application. You have a curb cut. The bylaw says that it has to be safe. We proved that it is safe. We have DOT permission to make it. I can't think of any reason we, you asked us for two things, we provided them. I can't think of any reason it would be denied. Of course, that's your discretion.
Right.
It'll be up to you and we'll take our gravity.
From what I'm hearing here at the table, I guess the sticking point is whether what you provided with us is enough.
I'm not sure what else we could provide you. We have a DOT, we had DOT looked at it. They said it was fine. They knew there was an existing driveway there. They said the new driveway was fine. The wires are obviously not an issue. The sight lines are even greater, even according to your police chief, than the other entrance. So, it's even safer than the other entrance. There's no reason that it wouldn't be considered safe. It doesn't have to be safer than the other entrance. In fact, this has to be a safe way to enter and exit. And you have a situation where it improves public safety by having fire access to it.
Usually, to get a ZBA approval before you, the work is done. Now, isn't that customarily the procedure, not to make the curb cut and then come to the board and...
We didn't realize that it was an issue when it was pointed out to us by your building inspector. We immediately came to the board and discontinued use of it.
You didn't think a curb cut onto a state road was gonna be a problem?
We thought that was DOT approval. We thought that DOT was the one who approved that, ones that they approved it, we could proceed forward. We didn't realize that there was also, you had to come before the ZBA and get their approval. But as soon as we heard that, we immediately discontinued use of it, made our application and haven't used it since.
Yep. After the wires came down and the cones were put up and...
We put up the cones immediately because your building inspector said not to use it anymore.
Right.
I mean, ever source was there and they raised the wires immediately.
Okay, so I offered you the opportunity.
Sure.
Okay, so it's seven twenty-five, we'll close the meeting to the public and discuss amongst ourselves what we want to do here. So, I guess what we need to figure out here is if what we were provided with is substantial enough.
Well, to me, our burden of safety, I mean...
Mm-hmm, that's what we're covering ourselves because...
Right.
There has to be, safety is paramount when we're granting a variance. You feel this is safe?
Well, I feel, you know, based on, you know, the other comparables in the area, you know, the entrance to exit to Mass DOT, the entrance and exit to South Deerfield Water Supply District, the other two industrial parks, I mean, I think it's got a much better line of sight than coming off Pine Street, you know, onto 116, and then the next intersection would be Long Plain Road slash South Main Street. You know, so that, to me, is the neighborhood comparables. So, obviously Pine Street, South Main Street, Long slash Long Plain Road, you know, those are weightily intersections, but, you know, probably have vast more traffic than what's gonna be coming out there and that the industrial park has less traffic than what it has in the past. So, you know, is it an unreasonable, you know, or unsafe entrance and exit there compared to what's already on that street? I can't see, I can't think that if we asked for a formal traffic study with count, et cetera, it would, it would give us more information, but we'd still probably be in the same place. Right? And that's just how I feel about it. You know, you look at other places, I mean, it's really hard to pull out of One Greenfield Road, the Dunkin' Donuts. And that was, you know, that's in that, and that's...
Busy corridor.
A lot busier because you have both the 116 and the 510 traffic there. So, I can't see this driveway as, although it may not make sense to some people, as being unsafe or unfit for that location.
I just feel DOT says...
Basically, doesn't need a traffic study because it fits within their guidelines.
I feel that they approved it on the forum.
Yeah, I'm absolutely for it. I feel like they met the requirements that we asked of them enough so that we are following our bylaws and that we feel like we're going in it with a little bit more information to make our decision, to protect ourselves as well. I think it's really unfortunate. I feel like the two parties want different things, but it's not something that we can clear up. We just have to, we have to just decide what makes sense for what the power that we have. So...
And I guess I feel the same way. I mean, they've provided us with what we've asked. I don't like how the whole procedure played out.
Me neither, yeah.
I think it was, let's build something and then get permission afterwards. And then to say you didn't know that that's the procedure, I don't know. But on the other hand, we're stuck in the middle of a disagreement. But...
And we, there's certain decisions we can make, the other stuff we can...
Right, right, right. The only thing I would want to do is put a restriction on if any new development goes into the industrial park.
A condition, okay.
A condition that...
On the special permit, okay.
That this has to be revisited. And I think something a little more detailed would have to be, a more detailed traffic study would have to be done because if there's more in and out because of that driveway that they really don't need, then there's gonna be traffic concerns.
Yeah, but we don't get to evaluate whether they need it or not. That's not up to us.
Right, and you know, I...
It's like the three sidewalks, two sidewalks, or whatever.
Right, I thought about it, you know, after I watched the first meeting. You know, if both parties that are in the room today came and asked for that driveway, then the driveway would still be the same just because people are disagreeing about it. Is the safety different?
Well, I'd feel more comfortable if they had a better understanding with DEDIC, if they communicated and respected DEDIC's position, being the landlords of the industrial park, rather than stick something down their throat and...
And I agree. I mean, I think that, that people that are in town, businesses need to do their due diligence prior to building things and check in with the town hall and make sure that things are followed. But at the end of the day, I can't say that that's unsafe or unusable drive... But at the end of the day, I can't say that that's a unsafe or unusable driveway.
I agree.
Okay, I guess at this point, if there's no other comments, we can go to a vote.
For granting a special permit.
I agree, yes.
And I will as well. But I would like to put the condition on that if there's anything new in the industrial park, that this needs to be looked at again. And I really hope that they can get along with DEDIC. Communicate, so that we're not stuck in the middle of a quarrel.
Yeah.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So this time, there's no new business. I don't see any correspondence. So make a motion to close the meeting at 7:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.